Evening, everyone. We'll bring the October twelfth City Council meeting to order. Is there a motion on tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt today's agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
If you're on mute, Randy. We don't hear anything. There we go.
Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Uh, no presentations. So on to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt today's consent agenda.
I can second that.
Motion made second. Any discussion?
I'd like to pull, um, items A, B, D, and E.
Item D is what remains?
Item C remains.
C is in cat?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, any other discussion? Do the motion then. Uh, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
I don't think you have your headset on. Maybe that's a... Okay. That's a plus.
Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Uh, Suzanne, item A. Suzanne, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Um, on the bill's last, my question is, um, on page four, the professional service fees for Rum River cons- consultant, what is that exactly for?
Suzanne, we're using them to assist us in our building inspections, uh, due to the fact that we got behind with the loss of an employee and the fact that we have two big commercial projects that are under plan review. And we've had six individual, single-family dwelling reviews. We just wanted to make sure we're able to get our permits out in time. Uh, previous charges on this have been, been able to charge to the CARES Act. Uh, this two weeks and the next week or 10 days will be the last time we require the service.
So the money's coming from CARES, not our budget? Is that correct?
Th- th- this one will come from our budget. The previous one payments came from CARES because it was directly related to COVID-19.
Okay, and so is this an, considered an unbudgeted item or does it fall in there under something?
It'll fall under professional services fees and we do have money in that category to pay for it. We're also, uh, under budget in, in this category because of leave time that was unpaid for city personnel and for a position that's been vacant for a month.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Nelson, would you take roll call vote, please? You're on mute. You're on these nights.
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
You're shown as on mute, Randy. On the screen. I'm gonna assume he is disconnected right now.
You've been invisible.
He is disconnected, so go ahead.
Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Item B, Suzanne.
Okay, on item B, this is for the minutes and on page nine, um, towards the bottom of the page, probably after public hearing, one, two, third paragraph, it says, "Someone who had 10 or more acres should need an IUP shouldn't." I think that word shouldn't needs to go, come out. Or maybe, and should, should be, shouldn't. The word should, should be, shouldn't. 10 or more acres shouldn't need an IUP and then shouldn't should be removed.
Yeah?
Okay. All right. I will make a motion to approve item B, the meeting minutes on the consent agenda.
Does that change? Is there a second?
Second.
Ten seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
No, can you hear you still? Okay, that's a, yes.
Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion. Suzanne.
Item D on the consent agenda is the administrative assistant position discrete description and update salary classification. I don't understand why we would start someone up at a higher salary than the person who left. I think first it insults that person who left because I know, um, they were doing a lot of that stuff. And I think a new person needs to prove themselves before they get a raise. And $23 an hour is nothing to sneeze at, so I'm not sure. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but I, I can't agree to starting somebody off at a higher position. And you don't even know how well they're going to perform.
Suzanne, uh, Mrs. Hayer has been here for a year and a half and she's definitely proven her value. Uh, she started off at a much slower salary than the, the person that she replaced. Uh, there was a difference in pay grade between three and four. Ms. Hayer started out at pay grade three. We're recommending that she be moved up now to pay grade four because of her contributions in the COVID-19 when everybody is working at home. She was one of the few staff members that stayed here and she did Yoban's work, uh, in making sure that those people that stayed at home had all the things that they needed. Uh, she stayed here, uh, with the arrest exposure for COVID-19. She's still on that job. She's our assistant elections coordinator. Uh, she's doing a fantastic job there and, uh, when this was hired, we had discussed the possibility to, once this person demonstrated the capacity to fill this position, that we would consider an upgrade to pay grade four.
So you're just transferring somebody and you're going to have to fill another position? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, she'll, she'll remain in the same position, but we're going to change, we're recommending changing her pay grade to four because she is doing the same work of the person that she replaced and is doing an exemplary.
Okay, I get it. There's an echo.
I just want to make a comment too, Jack, that, uh, Cindy's gone above and beyond, so I think she deserves that step.
Yeah, she, she's definitely demonstrated that she's a, she's a real team player and that, uh, she was instrumental in us getting to that, uh, first three or four months of the COVID work at home mandate, uh, when we only had three to four people here in, in the office. And she did a great job. She's doing a good job with elections and she does a great job with customer-facing service. I highly recommend that you approve this.
Okay, I will make an motion to approve item D on the consent agenda. I'm, uh, really impressed. I had no idea. Thank you for the information.
Second. Second.
Tom seconds. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
That's a, that's a yes.
Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
And Mayor Voss.
Aye. That motion passes. Item E, Suzanne.
Okay, item E refers to the public hearing of delinquent accounts and I was a little confused when I was looking at this. And I'm not understanding, are these deli- delinquent accounts related to SAC and WAC and utilities? Or are there other things, other issues that are involved in this?
No, that's only for utility bills, water and sewer. It doesn't include any SAC and WAC fees. SAC and WAC fees are collected prior to the issuance of any type of permits. These are people that are already hooked on to the system that haven't paid their bills.
Okay. And have you, um, contacted them? Do they have a reason? Is it, are they out of work? Is there, do they, are they just not doing it?
Uh, there's some of them that typically do not pay their bills and have it assessed on their taxes. That's been their method of payment. Uh, we haven't had any discussions or none of these payers have called in to give us an explanation for their situation. This is just standard procedure that we do every year. And it's to the same people.
They'll have the opportunity when we have the public hearing too. That's kind of the purpose.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll make a night, uh, motion to approve item E on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, makes a second. Uh, any discussion? See none. Uh, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
We're not hearing you, sorry.
Uh, Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Yeah, that's it for consent agenda. Onto no new business, so on to department reports. New development.
Item seven A one, administrative subdivision request, forty-five twenty-five Fond Lake Drive, Todd and Nancy Fisher. Mr. and Mrs. Fisher submitted an application for administrative subdivision at four five two five Fond Lake Drive. The existing parcel is 2.56 acres in size. It is proposed to be split, to split the parcel to create one 14.46 acre parcel, parcel A, in your packet, and one 6.1 acre parcel, parcel B, that's exhibited in your packet. There is an existing home on what will become parcel A. Parcel B has a contingency for purchase. It's a lot split. The newly created parcel meets all city code requirements for parcels located in the rural residential zoning district, which includes setbacks, buildable area, and septic placement. Apart dedication fee in the amount of $2,000 is required for newly created parcel. Staff recommends city council consider approval of the administrative subdivisions with the conditions in the attached resolution.
Yeah, the resolution's on.
I'll make a, a motion to approve, um, resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-two. Um, administrative subdivision for property pin number two zero three three two three two one zero zero one zero. Oh, never mind, this is the wrong one.
Yes.
Sorry, that's on the previous page. Make a motion to approve the... Is this the page? Oh my gosh.
What do you say?
Somebody else maybe make it. I don't have the page in front of me.
I'll make a motion for approving resolution twenty twenty sixty-one, approving the administrative subdivision for the creation of one buildable lot for the property legally described as Lot One, Block One, Fairway Pines, pin number twenty-five thirty-four twenty-three twenty-four zero 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 four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Suzanne seconds. Discussion. Jack, I got a question. Um, on the second whereas on the resolution, it, uh, refers to the East Bethel Review Committee? I'm not familiar with that term.
I am not either. That's the first time I've seen that. Um, positive, it probably refers to the planning commission.
That's a committee of, uh, it's Nate, Stephanie Hanson, uh, Ja- Nick. And it's the one that we used to have in person before, uh, COVID, Jack.
Okay. Yeah, this doesn't have to go to the planning commission for administrative subdivision or lot split.
Okay, but I guess I've just never heard of the review committee before, so it's... Okay, so it's, it's not a... It's not a public commission. It, it's just staff review, isn't it?
Th- that's correct.
Okay. All right.
I have a question. Is the plan for this, she's going to sell the other lot for a development? Is that the plan?
That's correct. To sell it for another single-family home.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, if it was going to be one home or multiple homes.
Only one.
All right, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Say, Jack, on that second lot, where would the driveway come in? I, I can't really see it clear on the, the, uh, picture here. Where would that come in?
Let me see if I can bring that up and we can share.
I know there's an existing house there. I see that one, but I don't see it for the second lot.
Can you see what I have on the screen?
No.
Hang on just a moment.
In the meantime, I'm just gonna test. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Hello, Randy?
Yay.
Welcome aboard.
I don't, I don't see driveway on the, on the drawing.
There, there is no driveway shown on the drawing, but it would be east of that existing home that's shown where the cursor is. I don't think the final lot location or the house has been staked off on that. Uh, there is a pending sale if this is approved, so I don't think we're at that stage yet on the location of the driveway or the exact placement of the home.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any other discussion on this item? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Item two.
Item seven A two, administrative subdivision for twenty-two oh four and two oh four one eighteen, Highway sixty-five, Adam Arneson and U Puller Auto Parts. Mr. Arneson and U Puller Parts has submitted an application for a lot line adjustment for the above referenced properties. Attachment two in your packet shows the proposed changes to the parcel. U Puller Parts would obtain 1.19 acres of land located along Highway sixty-five, just south of their current facility. The business would not be allowed to expand its current facility onto the 1.19 acre parcel unless all local federal regulations are met and the review is completed and approved by the city engineer. Mr. Arneson would obtain 4.38 acres of land north of his parcel. This area is high ground, but is not accessible to U Puller Parts because it is surrounded by wetlands. The high ground is accessible from Mr. Arneson's property. Staff recommends city council approval of the lot line adjustment with the conditions in the attached resolutions twenty twenty dash sixty-two.
Is there more standing for that?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Suzanne. Go ahead.
I got it right here. Uh, I'll make a motion approving, uh, a resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-two, approving the administrative subdivision for the following properties, pin number two zero dash three three dash two three dash two one dash zero zero one zero two zero four one hi- one eight, Highway sixty-five. Pin number, I just, twenty dash thirty-three dash twenty-three dash twenty-four dash zero 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 four two zero two zero four, Highway sixty-five, pin number two zero dash three three dash two three dash two four dash zero 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 five.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ten seconds. Discussion. Jack, um, this lot line adjustment, uh, there's no new lots created, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not creating a landlocked parcel. It, it's gonna be part of the bigger parcels of the cell.
That's correct. The one that's on U Puller Parts is in addition to their southern property. The one to the north on Adam Arneson's property is in addition to an existing site.
All right, I just want to make sure it's clear on that. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronnie.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizanz.
Aye.
Councilmember Oracle.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. And that motion passes. Item A three.
Item seven point A three, city code amendment, chapter ten, article five, farm animals. At the September seventh, twenty twenty, city council board meeting, an amendment to chapter ten, article five, farm animals, pertaining to the keeping of chickens was introduced and discussed. As a result of the discussion, council directed staff to prepare amendments to the code to address the increasing interest for the keeping of chickens and present those changes for consideration at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty city council meeting. Council discussed the proposed changes at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty meeting and tabled the matter pending staff's incorporation of the following changes. Change number one, removal of roosters from table one. Item three point O, update to allow roosters on lots over 10 acres without an IUP and to allow the city council to grant an IUP for the keeping of roosters on lots over three acres. Item three P, update to require administrative permits on lots up to 10 acres in size. Item three V, update to add table two outlining the standard by lot size. In summary, the proposed changes are as follows. For properties less than a half an acre, up to six hens would be allowed with an administrative permit. The proposed cost for a permit would be $50. On properties a half acre to 2.99 acres, up to 10 hens would be allowed. On properties three acres to 9.99 acres, up to 20 hens would be allowed. And on properties 10 acres or greater, up to 50 hens would be allowed and roosters would be permitted with an approved interim use permit. The keeping of roosters is by far the most common farm animal complaint received by staff. Since August first, twenty twenty, staff has received 26 complaints regarding roosters. These complaints stem from four properties sized 1.11, 1.83, 2.51, and 4.74 acres in size. Due to the frequency of the previous noise complaint history regarding roosters, staff recommends regulations remain as is and proposed in regards to roosters for properties less than three acres in planted subdivision. The placement of coops on the property and the requirements for permission of adjoining property also discussed at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty meeting. Coops currently must meet the side and rear yard setbacks for the zoning designation of any property that propose to construct a coop or accessory structure or those indicated in section ten dash one fifty-two, whichever is greater. Staff is seeking direction as to the addition of these requirements to the ordinance. Included in your packet is a redlined copy of the proposed changes of the ordinance, a clean copy of the ordinance, and a summary of publication. The proposed fee for an administrative permit under this ordinance change and the proposed fee schedule consideration would be $50 for the keeping of up to 10 hen. Fees for IUPs where applicable are proposed to be $100. Staff recommends city council consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six, adopting amendments to chapter ten, article five, farm animals.
Yeah. Your motion on this item tonight.
Move for approval of ordinance, uh, twenty twenty dash zero six regarding chapter ten animals and the definitions thereof.
I'll second that.
A motion made second. Discussion.
Yes, I do have a comment. Um, Jack, on page forty of our packet, uh, with the table with the application requirements, um, in your description, you were talking about, um, the roosters and their, and their permitting, uh, for over 10 acres. Now, according to this table, um, it says that between three and 9.99 acres, it requires an interim use permit. But however, in this table, 10 acres or greater, it just says permitted. So, uh, in your, in your description, you had said that 10 acres or greater required it, required an IUP. So which is it? Wh- which way are we going here?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the rest of the discussion over to Ms. McDermott. She's much more familiar with this than I am, so. Aaron, can you answer Councilperson Pizanz's question?
Yes, the, the intent was to ma- relax the restrictions on lots over 10 acres. I believe that we may have just missed that update in the, uh, description on the staff report. So when Jack and I had gone over the meeting minutes from the last time it was discussed, it sounded like the council as a whole kind of wanted to relax the rooster requirements. So it looks like we updated it just in the, um, in the new table, but not within the write-up.
Very good. If that is the case, then I would like to, uh, make a friendly amendment, uh, to change the, uh, the, um, verbiage in the, uh, table to application requirements for 10 acres or greater to include roosters requiring an interim use permit.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll, I'll second the motion, uh, discussion. So anything over three acres then for, for, for roosters is going to require an IUP. That's correct?
Correct.
That was the intent.
That's correct.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion to amend?
Yeah, I, I have this, I want to say something. This doesn't seem like it's easing up on restrictions, maybe for chickens, but it's increasing restrictions on roosters. I don't think, um, I don't think there should be any administrative fees on this at all. I don't think you should have an IUP for roosters or for chickens. Well, I don't even know why we can't just allow it, why we have to, um, control people and control, try What? I don't even know why we can't just allow it, why we have to, um, control people and control, try to control everything. It doesn't make any sense to me. Um, it's not freedom. Um, I can understand. Have it needing a permit for the chicken coop and for going through the planning commission for the chicken coop and making sure it meets setbacks and all that, but. I'm not for, uh, increasing these regulations at all. And I think that's what our residents were trying to tell us and were very upset as far as the rooster complaints go. Um, I'm assuming, um, that the complaints are for the noise for when the roosters grow in the morning. Um, but I think people will eventually get used to it, just like they get used to the trains and the sirens if you live in the cities or the bars if you live in the cities. No matter where you go, there's going to be some kind of noise. Um, there's a shooting out here. The the country, the rural areas have different, um. Thing issues than the cities, but people have to learn to live with things. And that's my rant. Sorry. All done.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none, uh, Mister Nelson, could you take roll call?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Running.
Nay.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and the motion to amend passes, uh, back to the original motion now as amended. Any further discussion? There you go. Mister Nelson, could you take roll call vote please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Running.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Nay.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. On to city administrator.
Item seven G one ordinance amendment, chapter two, article four, boards, committees, and commissions. Uh, I sent out an earlier email this afternoon. And in that email, I requested that the attachments included in that replace attachments two and three in the packet. There were some minor issues with some of the language in those. Those have been corrected to meet the city attorney's recommendations for this matter. Uh, with that, I'll proceed with the staff report. The East Bethel City Council approved the vacation of the city's roads commission at their September twenty eighth, twenty twenty meeting and discussed the creation of a roads committee. The function is the body to address roads and public right of way matters. Staff presented an ordinance amendment to establish a road committee to the council at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty city council meeting. Amendment was discussed and council tabled the proposal and requested that staff adjust all of chapter two, article four, boards, committees, and commissions. To reflect a proposed addition of the roads committee to this section of the ordinance. Staff has made the following additions and deletions to chapter two, administration, article four, boards, committees, and commissions. We've added a clarification of committees under section two dash seventy one. We've deleted the committee from section two dash seventy four regular meeting. Add the clarification to section two dash seventy five regarding city employees participating on commissions or committees. Number four, add the establishment of road committee as section two dash one eighty three. Number five, added duties, powers, and responsibilities as section two dash one eighty four. And as a separate matter unrelated to the roads committee, but in order to keep this ordinance consistent. We've had the addition of the city administrator and city finance director as liaisons to the finance committee in section two dash zero seven. City councils requested to consider the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty zero H, which amends chapter two, article four of the East Bethel city code and creates a roads commission committee.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero eight. City council of city East Bethel ordained as follows the city code, chapter two, administration, article four, boards, committees, and commissions, um, with the road committee.
Second.
Mayor Voss, you're on mute.
That'd be my turn. Um, motion made in second discussion.
I actually just have a question. Is now is this committee? Does it have a chair or anything like that or not?
No, it won't have a chair with just two councilpersons.
Okay, and two councilpeople will be at every meeting or it's one main one and one backup?
It could, it could. They normally would be at every meeting. However, it could function with just one councilperson. All they'll do is take under advisement and make recommendations to city council.
Okay, and when is this going to take effect? When will, um, the, when do you propose the first meeting will be?
Uh, we'll have to publish this and it would be within ten days. We could have the first meeting, uh, the end of this month at the earliest. Uh, we'll only meet as needed though.
Okay, thank you.
Jack, my question is under establishment there. It says seven members. I can only count five.
Tim, that's the email that I sent you.
Okay, I didn't get it.
They clarified that and removed that language from.
Okay, thanks.
Revision in the ordinance.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, Mister Nelson, could you take roll call vote please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Running.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, that motion passes. Item G two.
Request for proposals for the animal control officer contract. Gratitude Farms has been the city's animal control officer since two thousand nine and has provided excellent service to the city. This contract expires on December thirty first, twenty twenty. In order to compare cost and levels of service, the city will be requesting quotes for professional services for the execution of this contract beyond twenty twenty. A draft request for proposals as exhibited in attachment one outlines the process for submission and requirements of a proposal to the city. The city solicits RFPs every three to five years as part of its policy to ensure competitiveness for management, legal, and other contractual service. The most recent RFPs were used to secure a management contract for the city's ice arena. The contract for the city assessor, the contract for the city engineer, and a legal agreement with their current city attorney. Should city council approve the solicitation of proposals for the animal control officer services. The RFPs would be presented to city council for consideration on or before December fourteenth, twenty twenty. Also included in your packet is a sample contract for this service. Uh, the contract is furnished only as an example and would be discussed at a future meeting regarding the award of a contract for this service. Staff is recommending council consider approval to authorize a solicitation of request for proposals for the animal control officer.
Would authorize request for proposal. Um, solicitation of an RFP for the animal control officer.
I'll second.
Motion is made in second discussion.
I just have a question. Um, Jack, do you mail these out to all, um, of the lo, to the local animal control officer? That are, um, operating in, you know, our areas or do you just announce it and people request it or how does that work?
We will advertise it in the Anoka Union and we will send it to the known animal control officer services in the area, which we have three. Uh, we'll also advertise it on our Facebook, Nextdoor webpage, Reader Board.
Jack, is this something we can also post on the league website?
Yes, we can post it on the league website also.
Yeah, we'll do a little cover. Um, I've got a question. There's, well, it seems like there's a conflict here on the cover of the RFP. It states that proposals are due November thirtieth. But then on the first line of the proposal notice, it says December third.
The December third is correct. We will make that correction.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Hey, hearing none, Mister Nelson, could you take roll call vote please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Running.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye, and that motion passes. Ron, staff report. Jack.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The city newsletter has been delayed in reaching the residents. We certainly apologize for that. There have been some issues with not only the printer, but the mailing house. Uh, we were told and assured last Friday that the newsletter will be in the hands of the residents this Thursday. Again, our apologies for the tardiness in getting this out, but, uh, uh, we've experienced some problems with some of our vendors on this. Uh, another announcement I'd like to make is on our meet the candidate session. So far, we've had over five hundred views on YouTube, uh, which is pretty good. And, uh, also we've closed the application for the cares business relief grants. Uh, those will be batched up and sent to elders tomorrow for eligibility certification. We'll have a discussion, uh, probably at the eight, October twenty sixth, uh, council meeting or the November second work meeting. To discuss the awards and grants in the event there's additional funds available.
And Jack, I mean.
We got six applications.
Good. Anything else, Jack?
That's all I have.
Okay, on to council reports. Randy.
I just wanted to, uh, mention that the airports commission meeting is happening, uh, this Wednesday. There is, we're going to be, um, voting on who is going to be the chair for 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 those committees. Um, as well as, uh, um. Aircraft operations, noise complaints, construction updates, um, and tenant highlights. So, um. That meeting again is, uh, this Wednesday at four P M. And, um, we'll have a report, uh, at the next council meeting. Um, the other thing that I have is. That I am going to be making a proposal. Um. Um, what I'd like to do is I would like to, um, add the public forum, uh, to the meeting minutes for city council. Um, I think that in that way we can at least get the information out to the public as at least what was discussed. Um, so therefore I'm not going to ask for a motion this evening, but I think that we should add that to the next, um. City council meeting for discussion and and a vote. So, other than that, I don't have anything else.
Okay, Suzanne.
Yes, I will be at the airport commission meeting on Wednesday too, and I am wondering, um. When I was doing my Skype practice with, um. I can't remember her name, but anyways, um, I was doing Skype practice because it will be via Skype. And, um, she asked me if I could say why East Bethel decided to join the airport commission. And I don't really have an answer, so I'm wondering if somebody in this room can answer that.
Randy, you want to go?
Uh, sure. So, um, we are, the city of East Bethel originally got involved because of Leon Magar. He was involved as a pilot and, and, uh, you know, kind of wanted the city of East Bethel to be involved with the airport commission. I mean, this is the Anoka County Airport Commission. So when Leon decided to, uh, turn over, uh, his liaison duties with, um, the airport commission. Uh, that's when I took over. I've been doing that now for a couple of years. Um, my main interest is is a couple fold. The first thing is, is it is the Anoka County, um, airport. And so therefore, um, I think it's always a good idea to to keep involved in some of these, um, meetings with with other cities. Um, not only to keep, you know, some some communication going with those cities. But the other part is, is that, you know, um, while it may not be a very large part of our economic, um, development at this point. I think we should always keep an open mind for the the businesses here in in East Bethel to have that, um. Say in how the how the airport is run. Um, so, uh, you know, I, that's always been kind of an interest of mine. I also had some some concerns, um, having to do with drones and airports back at the time when I first started, and I still do. Um, and so that's kind of why I got involved. Um. Um, so from my perspective, I think it's it's a good idea if the city were to continue. Uh, with our interest in, you know, county, uh, airport commission.
Perfect. Thank you.
And if I can make a a quick correction, uh, Ed Fiore was the our liaison, uh, not Leon. And so hopefully just save two calls to Jack tomorrow.
Perfect. All right. And then I have, um, thank you so much for that, Randy. I have a parks meeting on Wednesday right after the airport commission. So I'm going to be, um, screened out by the end of Wednesday.
Let me comment about the airport commission. That was going, that was active more than eight years ago. Uh, don't recall who might have done it back then, but still, we won't.
I just want to make sure I apologize to both Ed and 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 Leon for my mistake. Uh, thank you, Steve, for keeping me honest.
Anything else, Suzanne? Hey, Tim.
Um, the only thing I got is a, uh, started construction on the rain guard over channel lane. So if anybody wants to get over and see what it looks like, uh, it should be done by the end of the week, and that's all I've got.
Yeah, Tom.
I don't have anything.
Okay, and, uh, I have one thing to bring up tonight. Um. CLIA, the Coon Lake Improvement Association, um. Has published a book and it's a tabletop book. It's titled Chronicles of Coon Lake. And, uh, I think they're going to start distributing that actually this week. Um, it's available through, um, through CLIA and their website is W W W dot Coon Lake dot org. And it's meant to be a tabletop, uh, book with a lot of photos, a lot of history. Uh, I know they've done a quite bit of interviews with, uh, kind of long timers around the lake. So. So I'm interested to see the book and, uh, it's, uh, nice to have something that documents or at least a part of our city. So. Um, and that is all I have tonight. Uh, so with that, um, Mister Nelson.
Mister Mayor, before before Mister Nelson reads his, uh, directions to go into closed session. After he concludes that, I would like to take a one minute break so we can make sure that everything is set up properly. For, uh, this to be a true closed session. When I come back in, I can give the signal on when we can start.
Understood.
Uh, mayor and council members, for the record and for the benefit of the public, the city council, the city of East Bethel is about to go into closed session. Pursuant to Minnesota statute, section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B for purposes of attorney client privilege. The purpose of the closed session is to discuss a pending litigation regarding a personnel matter concerning the city of East Bethel Fire Department. There's a need for confidentiality so that the council and its attorney can discuss strategy and settlement offers. On conclusion of the closed session, the council will return into open session prior to adjourning the regular meeting. With that, uh, Mister Mayor, a motion may be made to go into closed session for the reasons I've stated.
I'll make a motion to go in closed session.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Uh, any discussion?
One question. Where's the the invitation to the closed session?
There is, no, there there is none, Tom. This is a a format where we don't have to log in, log out, log in, log in.
So. Yeah, so let's hang tight.
So we'll take a one minute break and I'll be back and let everyone know. So, we'll take a one minute break and I'll be back and let everyone know when, when we can.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, could you take roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Ronning.
Aye.
Councilmember Placence.
Aye.
Councilmember Urkel.
Aye.
Mayor Voss.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Stranland, uh, if you are still on the line, you've shown that you are. Uh, we are going to close session, so we're going to have to have you log out.
Suzanne?
What?
So for the meeting on Wednesday night, you're our representative, so you will be making all of the votes for the City of East Bethel?
Okay, I just want you to know I'm going to volunteer to run to chair it.
Very good, all right.
I, I just figure it might be.